Okay, uh, we're gonna review and approve the minutes from October 7th. There were motion to do anything. Seconded by me.
We vote, can I ask?
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Minutes may be looked at more so than many of our minutes, and they just don't flow well. I mean, this particular set of minutes, could we have them double, could we have them edited? Not for meaning, but just for flow? Because some of the sentences just don't make any sense.
Robert takes great offense to it, I will say, as she writes down what is said. If it don't make sense, she writes down the nonsense. Do you think that you didn't?
She's not using the, um...
What am I, an AI?
It looks to me like she's using the AI.
No, she sits there with her headphones for about four and a half hours, piled over the time, listening and re-listening, writing it down. So that's why she, there's something you don't think you said and you want to say?
Well, yeah, I will bring that up. It's just, it's, I mean, it's just never with the core. They're not good.
It doesn't, but it's an, it's an actual rhythm, depiction of the minutes as written.
It's linear rather than grouped by subject matter.
I had nothing, no complaints about that. But just the nature of the sentences, the prepositions are wrong. I mean, it just, you can't understand some sentence interpretation.
You'd have to hire a professional.
What you would do is put that out, not as your meeting minutes, you would put that out as a synopsis of the meeting minutes. So it would be a secondary document that goes along with it.
The next week, that's how previous boards did it. To send it back and sit down and keep doing it, you know, from a grammatical standpoint, it would probably be...
But some of it, you can't understand what the sentence is about.
But it's your job as the board to correct it. You need to know what you said and did not say, correct it, and then go back and approve the minutes afterwards, not say, "You sent us back something that makes sense and asked for..."
I want to change this to this.
There have been a couple of times I have said that.
Jeffrey loved that stuff, and he'd come back and she'd pre-approve them, and they were, you know, nice novels. But, um, yeah. That would be, I think, reasonable expectation of the most of these.
Did Jeffrey even come back?
We didn't finish the roll call of the...
Wes, I hear Joyce questioning whether, you want to hold off on approving these and make some changes?
Well, what I'm hearing is it would take a board member to sit down, probably the better part of the day, and go through these minutes.
Yeah, that's...
And that's...
Yeah, you'd have to have the video playing too.
No, it's your responsibility to the board to review the minutes and correct corrections, not pick apart grammatical errors. If you want that, you know, that's something the board should probably request, but I mean, it's your responsibility as board members to review these and make your...
Yeah, but I was only pointing, I didn't see any easy way just to correct. There's something that...
No, we'd have to watch the video. Well, how long do we know?
Because you said it.
But you remember what you said last Tuesday at 3:00 PM in the afternoon?
For five years, we sit here, and Steve, I did not say that, and we...
Okay, let's just approve the minutes.
Well, that's exactly...
I don't think any of us want to spend an entire day making these minutes.
No, you hire a professional. You gotta spend a little money. I know the town doesn't like to do that.
Spend a lot of money.
All right, let's go for a vote.
Hey, you know, the CBA has their own lawyer show up every time.
That's your eye.
All right.
All right. Now, we've got discussion of the towns in the regulation, item number five.
I'm here for you, I'm looking for you.
Yeah, so what I have here is a PowerPoint presentation that was put together by Mayor Mark Fugere, and went through and added some changes from some of the, some of the towns that are being referred to in the, in the document. So I've got it up here on the screen, and you've also got a copy of it in front of you. The first one, and I'll send this to all two folks, and we'll post it on the website. These links on this first page will take you to each one of those communities so that you can take a look at their zoning ordinances as we move through this. They looked at five different communities, and looked at form-based codes, which are really codes that look at, look at the form of the, of the area rather than looking at specific setbacks and, and requirements like that. So what, what they have done is looked at, taken the comments that you got from Town Center Day and the different activities that were carried out, and have come up with some concepts for you to look at, that they're gonna be working on to bring you, for your zoning this year. So Y-form-based code, it's a land-based development regulation that gives you predictable built results and a high-quality... They call it a public realm here, but basically a place where you want to gather and, and businesses to thrive. So, so what it does is it shifts the focus from the form, you know, like 10-foot setbacks and all that kind of thing, to the character of the space that you're developing. So in other words, you can develop flexible standards, and I'll show you some as we go through, where you can reinforce what you want to reinforce in the area, and not necessarily make them build something that matches, but something that enhances the character. You know, the walkability, the quality, the construction, the colors, the front porches that people mentioned during the thing. So if you look at this...
Oak parking in front, parking behind the buildings out of the way.
Yeah, and you see some of the diagrams up here. I have it up here for people at home, if there's anybody watching, but you can show the buildable area here, and then it gives you different ways that you can arrange the buildings on these, these parcels. So based on some of the things that were talked about, and based on one of the developers' presentations.
Convened space, ring road around the outside, parking outside, away from them.
Don't need anybody.
I just solved it, so did you.
We force anybody to do any of this?
Well, it's in the regulations.
Here's the problem that I see with it. It's all subjective, and it's gonna, it's, it's gonna be worse than what we were, what we've been going through. What we're currently going through. Because it's, it's not black and white, it's gonna end up being a nightmare.
Well, it is, again, they're making the town center smaller too, right? So that's been reduced to, I don't know.
Less, less conservation.
Proposing an amendment to the voters to reduce the size of that zone.
Yeah, right.
I mean, my question, I think, is more logistical than, I kind of agree with Danny saying, but we just said our lawyer said if it's not written down, we can't force it, you know, in, with specific requirements. But with our town's center and the size of the lots, can we really have, you know, a road in the front and a road in the back? You know, the one we had over the Christmas tree dove, I don't think I could ask for that, there's not enough space to do all that kind of stuff. So I guess logistically, I'm wondering, does our, do the lots we have available in the town center have, you know, the bandwidth? I think these are big projects that, if I think of this project kind of stuff, I think of the one in Dover, you know, behind Patty B's. But it's huge.
Oh, yeah, this doesn't have enough land.
You remember, you were sitting, you were at that meeting, right, before the, we went out into the...
Yeah.
They're looking at farmhouse's things, two-story at the most, they're not looking for gigantic buildings.
Well, but you know, the parking in the back and pedestrian in the front, I don't know that we have...
Well, what percent of our land is developable that's not been developed so far in the town center that this would apply to?
Is this what you want the town to look like? You know, you're trying to create regulations to create the town you want it to look like, not, what are all the obstacles? Why bother doing it? Ah, hey, ah, as opposed to, is this the regulation? We're just talking about, you know, who's got the good regulations to follow, what town do we look at, you know? You rewrite this for us. You've got people trying to tell you that this is a method that may be your solution to some of your problems, it may not. There's gonna be half the board that hates it, half the board that doesn't know, and, you know, an outlier that, you know, I kinda... But they're just, the roadblocks to...
If you look at the dump, the dump situation, I've got 25 townhouses, which are ugly, and then you have one...
This is a perfect opportunity for that.
Right, commercial building with required five blocks, five spaces in the bottom. But commercial, you can't even rent the commercial.
You gotta adopt the regulation instead of saying, really, there's no place to do it, so why adopt the regulations?
Well, but Jamie, I don't think that's fair, because we put in mixed-use development to accomplish a certain goal, and it's never worked.
Why?
Because...
Require the commercial space.
What was the goal?
The goal was commercial space.
And so you don't have the commercial space below?
There's no market for the commercial space.
That's a different argument.
No, but no, but...
You can't keep requiring it if they want to build two more of these O'Neill buildings.
My point, my point is...
They're ugly buildings, first of all.
That's what this is all about.
I know, exactly.
Don't tell me to not look ahead when...
But you're not, you're saying there's a problem, and then you say the problem doesn't exist. You know, the mixed use for commercial...
No, that's not exactly, that's what I'm saying at all, I'm saying, mixed-use development had a goal. And if you ask the question, is it really achievable, maybe we wouldn't have done it because it hasn't happened.
Identify the goal, please.
To me, it...
I don't know what the goal was, I wasn't on the board.
The goal doesn't exist.
No.
The goal was to have commercial space on the bottom and residential units above. You have that next door. Maybe you don't like, and you and me don't like, the commercial space down below, but it met the goal, but it's just not...
And as John O'Neill says, "I can never, I can't rent 400..."
He's lying to you.
400 six...
He's just saying it because he wants residential units at $3,700 a month. Just like every other builder's gonna tell you what they want, not what they...
That's fine, we don't need the residential.
Baldwin says, "Commercial's coming back, and I'm happy to do it." I'll do even extra if you let me do a little bit of this. Baldwin, for Dove.
He thinks so, is, really, he thinks so?
Absolutely, it is...
They're actually, if you're looking at it, it's, it is starting to trend back upward at this point.
I don't know, 400 square...
I think the regulations would be tweaked, that I don't like contracted storage units below homes, and that's a tweak. But to say it didn't meet the goal, I don't, I don't think you have an argument, well, you may, I'd like to hear it, but I don't know what the goal...
I look at that, I would look at the one that is across from Cemetery, the new one they're doing.
That's not, oh, yeah, you don't know.
Tibeto, right.
The commercial space that downs, that says there's no market up downside, it's a residential development.
It's a whole, it's a holding spot.
Holding spot, yeah, they got it switched.
It's still a commercial space, you can't have a residential use in there. Now, if someone's illegal and making a violation, just like if they move into, you know, if all of a sudden there's people sleeping inside the movie theater, and they convert those to dormitory units, they violated that thing, it doesn't mean it's what's allowed, but it's a placeholder for commercial space. And so whether you like what's in there now, if it's someone's sewing room, but it's still a commercial space, in three years, when the lawyer moves in there, you've met your goal.
There's gonna be, we've required it to be separate deeds, restricted to commercial.
I think it's all gonna be condo now, even the...
But they downsized all the parking spaces because they said there's gonna be no commercial use.
And you approve that?
Well, at the end of the day...
I think it was a field thing by...
Is it gonna be a better residential development? I can try to push it to a way it's not gonna happen.
But I don't, I just don't understand the argument that you had a goal and you didn't meet it. I think you had a goal, you met it, you don't like it.
My point is to question whether it's achievable, this goal, as lofty as it is, has logistical problems, it can't be, it can't be overcome. It's a reasonable question to, if it can't be done, no matter how lofty the goal, you should question this, this is a way to go.
No. If you have, if you, if you want to buy a house and you start saving, you don't tell yourself, "I can never save enough to buy a house," and never start saving. You start saving now, and you hope that's what comes. You put the regulations in place, and it comes, or it doesn't. 20 years from now, nothing happens.
Okay, hold on, hold on. So you're showing this, are we supposed to be doing anything with this today, or can we look at it offline?
You can look at it.
Oh, yeah.
Then why don't we look at it offline, if anyone's agree with that?
This is a really people's space.
Yeah.
I like that.
The one thing I would keep in mind...
Rob Baldwin's ideas are in this, right.
Yeah, one thing I would keep in mind is this is scalable. I mean, you're talking about these towns that have these big projects, some of them have older downtowns. You actually have the blank slate that everybody keeps talking about out there. So, you know, you're, it's not gonna be the same thing as maybe Lancaster or someplace, it's got to establish that town with, you know...
And whatever they build is gonna be off the highways. You're gonna have to snake through here to get up to Baldwin's property, to get up to the old Henderson property. 38, I don't know what he's planning to put in there, the similar thing.
Well, nobody does, but then you have that regulation in place.
You have to have the right...
Bernie finishes his presentation, and...
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You have to have enough...
Are we, we need to prove these, what happened?
There's a lot of subjects, there's a lot of...
Yeah, but they're so far away.
I mean, I think, you know, you can take a look at this. All this really talks about is those different towns and some of the, some of the techniques they're using, and some of the things that you could adopt as well. But remember, it's scalable. You're not gonna do the same thing as some places got, you know, multi-story buildings lining Main Street. You've got the town center, it's different. You've got calis, you've got smaller buildings, and it's very, and it's an open space that you can make walkable and pleasant. All this is, is give you techniques that you can use.
Dump Development has one more year to get something to pull in here, we gave him an extra year.
Yeah.
So, let's see what he does.
So anyway, I mean, you can, I don't have to go through all of this, you can take it, you can look at it, and I'll post it on the website, and people can go and look at the different towns that are in here. Because I think you all have been doing this.
This is the same stuff that presented at that meeting to the folks.
Last question is, and this is for the board as a whole, we have a height restriction in town center. Is that something that increasingly after more stories, more density, is a good thing in anybody's mind or a bad thing?
Current height restrictions for three stories?
40 feet, three stories?
It's roughly three stories. I don't think I, you go, you start going higher than that, one, you completely change the character of the town, and two, you force your fire department into the situation where they need larger equipment.
Yeah, like out here, they'd have to call Dover and they'd get up to the roof to cut holes in the roof, 100-foot ladder, so...
Right.
You're saying you've already allowed it, a thing that a fire truck can't get to.
I wasn't on the board, I didn't allow this monstrosity out here.
So here lies the problem, is that when you call a property a two-and-a-half-story property, and you say that the foundation can be backfilled four feet, and that means it's an underground space on two or sides of it, or three sides of it, that is not a foundation, that is now a, like, a actual story, store level, story level of a property. And I'll use a perfect example on that. If you look at all the condos that they're building, they're classified as two-and-a-half-story properties. They're not two-and-a-half-story properties, they are three-and-a-half-story properties, they're three stories of residential, or three stories of living space and a top story of the roofline. The fourth story is the trussing, framing, and the roof. They are a four-story building. The same thing with the one that was built across the road from the middle school. The one, the, the building component that is built into the hill. There you, maybe you can make the argument that it's a two, a two-story building. But the units that face the road, they are a, are built along the roadside, they are a three-story building.
You'd be required to look at your definitions.
I understand that it is in the definition of that.
But even if that were true, what's...
Remedy?
What's the problem?
Mr. Remedy?
Was the, no, what's the problem? I mean, the remedy is if you don't want it, if somebody says, "I don't want that because I don't like the way it looks..."
Well, the remedy was Winkley Pond Road.
But not a remedy, if there's no problem, you don't need a remedy. You know, I'm not taking hogs because I don't have a cold, you know? But you identify that they're tall, is that a problem?
That's why we did Winkley Pond Road, take out the garages, lower the building, and they were smaller.
I know what you've done in the past, but I'm saying, but what's the problem? If, if, if a new board shows up tomorrow and says, "We want four stories," we think it's a good idea, there's no problem. And if you guys are saying you don't want it, but you're, you're saying there's a problem, I don't see the problem.
The problem is...
It doesn't mean it was a town, that's all.
Doesn't mean zoning, doesn't mean zoning.
And that's the thing, and that's the thing, you asked a good question, should we go higher? You poll the board, half say no, half say yes, you know, or 50, 40, and you vote no. But it's not, I don't see how there's a problem identified by saying the condos over there have walkout basements, and you want to identify stories in a different context. In like Winkley Pond, I mean, they may have to cut the top of their roof off if they don't meet the height requirements. I mean, that's, or come, go to the ZBA for a variance, I mean, there's, there's, you know...
I wouldn't be, they had a whole, they had garages below there before. Now they don't, so they must have lowered that building a whole story.
Right, but I'm just saying, but the regulations are there, if you like your regulations or you don't, you change them.
Right.
But I will point out, Andy, that on the one behind Irving Station, I specifically brought up the high requirement problem, because the first plan had that problem. And they made a modification, and John signed off on it and said, "That's, that's right."
Yeah, they backfilled more against the foundation, that was the modification.
And John said it, it was okay, he gave good reasons why.
100%.
So, I, you know, we brought that up specifically, and then the code enforcement office said, "No, this is..."
Your regulations say measure from the four corners of the foundation to grade, and then add the roof line.
Okay.
I once all set this as zoning, I got my zoning...
To write a regulation that says you can't bring in fill, or you can't build a retaining wall, or it's gotta be on a slab, and that's your first rule, you can write that regulation if you think it's necessary, that's the point. But you just, I think it's more, I didn't like that development, so there's something wrong with it, it's gotta be the height, as opposed to, there, it's dangerous, or it's this, or it's that, you know what I mean?
Well, no, at first it didn't meet code.
It did, but...
It didn't meet, no, it didn't meet zoning, it did not. The first plan did not, specifically. And John agreed with that, and they made a change, and John said, "Now it does comply." So, but the first plan did not meet zoning.
The other John, right.
John Higgins.
Yeah, no, I was on the board at the time, I, you know, but I, but the point is, if it meets the regulations, or it doesn't, what's the problem? And they sprinkle it, I don't, I don't understand.
Not meeting regulations is a problem, is a problem.
Yes, if it didn't, like, saying that back, having a walkout cave. You know, having a cave and walkout, you wanna...
Well, this is, I'm not arguing with this, I, I'm saying it's gotta be zoning. It didn't at first, John says now it does, and that was resolved in my mind. You're saying it doesn't, but...
No, I'm just, I'm making a case in point around the, like, you can make anything meet a regulation as long as you're willing to manipulate what you're doing just enough to make it comply.
Oh, but that's the way it is, it's either pass fail, it passes, it passes.
I'm not disagreeing with it, I'm just pointing out that...
But I think, you know, my personal opinion is, I think like in the Dove and Town Center, they did four-story buildings over there, would not be out of character, and, you know, increases density or whatever, but everybody's just throwing a pin in it, I'm not advocating for it, I'm just saying that you brought it up, and I think it's appropriate in some areas, could be, you know, as long as one.
To me, if we're trying to get density downtown to make the businesses work, I personally think going a little bit higher in Town Center is not a problem. That's, that's why I brought it up.
I'm gonna have to buy new equipment, our equipment.
Yeah, I didn't thought about that. That was something that unintended consequence.
Yeah, I mean, I would...
Quarter million dollar 100-foot ladder truck.
Quarter, keep going, it's a lot more than a quarter million. It's more than that, the last baseline truck was a half million.
About a million.
Well, I mean...
Can trucks be modified?
Or sprinkling, I mean, you know, there's ways around.
Our regulations now require...
Yeah, that's what they did here.
You put living space above 35 feet at that point.
Yeah, so there you go.
So, I mean, if I'm looking at that, what I'd be looking for is, like, I want a quintessential New England downtown. I'm gonna have maybe three stories, but that doesn't get there.
When you adopt stuff like this...
This is the farmhouse thing that they discussed at that meeting.
Put myself in the eye.
All right, what's next?
Big front porch on the front.
No.
Two stories.
Like, I want like Woodstock, Vermont, like, I want like quintessential New England. It's not a...
It's a farmhouse.
But the thing is, we're gonna get that because of cost today. You, you gotta have the density, you gotta...
But you can do that, like, if you start looking at, like, the way you set up row houses with shops in that area, and you, you build it out that way. But the challenge that we're always gonna face there is the water sewer issue.
Tibeto's starting that with his six.
But you know, I don't think with the land we have available, we have the density to drive the commercial space. I think that's why I think going up, it makes sense, because you gotta have a certain density to make this stuff work.
Right.
And if you don't have that density, then the rest of it falls apart. So I would, I'd go higher. I would, I think that a nice development with a nice character, a little bit higher, commercial space down below.
I think you will see the townspeople riot. And rightfully so.
If they hope for it.
Well, I mean, well...
If they go for it, it passes, it's always gonna be the riot.
Well, this is a trial and learning, it ain't, it ain't sailing up in the atmosphere, I'll say.
And the planning board supported it 4 to 3. People will say, "Oh, gee, I wonder why three guys didn't like that plan." Most of our stuff is unanimous, that's why we vote everything in, in the last two elections. All everything passed, and that the, but Steve's four.
Well, the zoning didn't pass, remember that? Does it change the zoning? That's because they, someone made a mistake in the articles they put on the sign, and that was enough to kill one. Remember that John Higgins had four zoning changes? John Hawkins had like four zoning changes, and...
Well, this might be before...
Three of them passed and one didn't, and the one that didn't was as good as the rest of...
I only talk about the two past elections, I don't know what happened in the...
Well, there was one that John proposed for, all were equally good.
Oh, is that the one that increased the ads signs, the six...
No, 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 it just changed, it just changed his odds.
Oh.
And they're all equally, you know, good.
Yeah.
But someone...
You're the only ones that remember that.
Someone had a sign, and they put, they don't vote for this one, they got the wrong article, and that was the only one that didn't pass.
You're wrong, please.
In spite of that, unanimously voted, unanimously voted for it, well...
So what is the intent of this package?
The intent of the package is just to give you an idea of what the consultants are looking at. They're putting together a zoning section for the zoning ordinance dealing with the town.
In the presentation they gave before the town's meeting, you were there, right? It was unanimous approval of you on the town's look.
So at some point, we're gonna vote on this, or any...
Yeah, once you, once you get an ordinance to look at, look...
So this is for us to marry ourselves and get ready for the...
But I wouldn't call it farmhouse.
There's not a long time, what time is it to get stuff done?
But you also need a... No part of it is because it's three stories.
Are these guys gonna be done, we'll do it in time, you think?
Well, they said it, we had a meeting with...
As you say, it's gonna be an interesting process.
And we need people willing to play ball.
Yesterday. Yeah, so the one thing I would suggest to you is that if, if people do have specific things that they want to look at for zoning, at this point, why don't you just email me your ideas, and, you know, take a look at it and bring it to you at the next meeting.
One of the things, not so much higher...
One from John, should we talk about these today?
Oh, well, the top one is John.
So why don't we just get through those?
Let me go back on, just go this a little bit.
Okay, go ahead.
Not to grab the height issue again, but he said the 10-foot space on the commercial space was better than, you know, typical... He wanted 10-foot space, you know, high ceilings in the commercial space. Is that a problem with our current zoning height, I guess is my question. So rather than go to four stories, maybe another five feet or something, is that what they're proposing, I guess, my question?
No four stories were meant to be done.
No, I'm just saying, if they, if they go to 10 feet for the first floor for commercial space, as he wanted to do in that presentation, does our current zoning allow that?
As far as the height restrictions? So the, the total would be, you know, the stories would be deducted from the total, so potentially, if somebody wanted that extra height, then, yeah, they'd be limited upstairs.
No, my question is, we're making these changes, should we increase the height somewhat in the town center to allow 10-foot commercial space in the first floor?
If I was voting, I would probably support you, Ron, but I'm not.
But, but I, but what he's asking now is our current regulation, our current code.
The height, that's it.
40 feet.
40 feet.
Is it, is it, is it a problem with our current zoning, is what I'm asking? I'm asking staff to check.
Oh.
Is, is our current zoning an issue?
I have not had one that is not meant to comply with zoning, I mean, with the height...
No, but we're never, we're never asked for 10 feet in the first, I'm like, Strato, he wanted 10 feet.
What are you talking about? You approved the TurboCam building, and that's a perfect example of that.
That over 40 feet, that's...
No.
No, what, I, I see what Ron's getting at. To do this type of structures that they're asking for, to get somebody in commercial, they're gonna want the added ceiling height, so 10 feet. Then you get two stories of living, so there's 18, so now you're at 38 feet without the roof. And what Ron's asking...
Yeah, I was like, I'm like, your math's not math.
Oh, right. With the roof, is that gonna be a problem?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
So, so do we want to look at maybe just a five, or even a five-foot increase to allow that two feet additional for commercial space?
But why is it a problem for the roof?
In that situation, if you sprinkle the gable area, even if it's an attic, that would make it okay?
Our regulations cap at 40 feet, Town Center and Regional Commercial and Village District, and it also says, "Living space above 35 feet, be sprinkled."
Oh, okay.
So an attic wouldn't have to be...
So an attic like there, or down there.
Just to get the gables, we want gables and dormers.
And the building's in the height.
But maybe they don't, you, maybe you start looking at development now that doesn't want... But maybe they don't, you, maybe you start looking at development now that doesn't want gables and dorm, dormers and you end up doing.
This is what Barrington wants.
Maybe. This is where I'm saying, if you look at like old world like.
It's a new library. It's the dental clinic.
Those are existing buildings.
I know, but that's the style that we want. You go flat roof. No flat roofs.
Well, you're, you're talking now about a farmhouse, which is a different style of house in the past. So we are talking about changing our required style.
Right.
So my question is, was that farmhouse?
Roof, roof style.
Do we have enough?
I think, yeah, I, I agree. And you may have to.
Be arguing about it.
We can still ask the developer to go towards this stuff.
No, I'm asking, do we?
This whole thing is a, is a negotiation, right?
This vision.
Well, no, Scott.
Where they want to.
I just want to add two feet.
No, I don't wanna add it.
No, no, I'm saying you go from eight, eight and a roof.
Well, so.
Yeah.
So you want to look at a change in our zoning to make things easier.
With this down, my question is, if we do what Strato wants.
Instead of having to go to ZBA, if we made a height requirement.
It's just questions.
Building structures that we feel fit.
Yeah.
Like, I don't want a flat roof like TurboCam. I want the gables. So that it looks more classic New Englander home. But maybe we need a little bit more height.
Well, I wanna know that we don't.
Ceiling for commercial space.
Identify it as a problem, make that change.
To get your ductwork, drop ceiling.
Yeah.
So we can keep.
Yeah, make it at the same time.
So that, that's all. That's why he's saying, so instead of a developer having to go before the ZBA for that, it's already in our zoning. And it's promoting easier building in our downtown.
What's the cost of going to the ZBA for them?
Two hundred fifty bucks.
Those are five because you're gonna notice everybody. But that's not, it's not good planning to design a regulation that requires ZBA approval. Now, if you don't do anything and then next year there's seven ZBA cases and you address the regulations to change it then, then that's a good way to do it. But, you know, and, and so with, I mean, I think like everyone, you gotta get past the hurdle of adopting something before you solve the problem that you haven't adopted yet.
Right.
But I think if you adopt.
It'll be next year.
We solve the problem at the same time.
Yeah, if you, if you go.
But ZBA, it's not a question of, Scott, it's not a question of cost. Developers hate, need ZBA approval.
Yeah.
That's a big negative for them. That's uncertainty. Uncertainty is about that.
And another month holdup, at least.
Yeah, yeah. Time, money, uncertainty, all negatives for investment.
All right, what else?
Um, Scott wanted to discuss this.
Yeah, do we wanna go through this? I don't know. Just see, maybe we can get it off our list. Maybe?
Or do you wanna, or do you wanna just do zoning in our next works session?
How about a temperature with no discussion?
Sure.
Take a vote with no discussion, see if we'll get.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we can do that.
That makes sense. I have one I wanna add.
Sure. So number one. Anybody have any challenges with it?
When you say number one, you mean like subdivision regulations?
Are you in favor of the minimum number one?
Why, where do you? I'm, I don't know if I have that one.
And multifamily's, um, four units.
This would just give.
How much should we need?
If somebody wants to do workforce housing, they'll come in and they'll show.
I've already lost mine.
You have to allow five.
No, I just want the paper that I had, so.
It's probably under your, your agenda.
I did.
You mean this?
Oh, this.
I don't know. I think they're talking about something. All right, number, the top one, does everybody think that's a good idea or not?
Thank you.
This will allow multi-use and general residential.
And multifamily is defined as.
Four units. Unless it's workforce housing, well, we can't control workforce housing.
Control workforce housing.
Is it three or three or more? Two years.
Yeah, two duplexes.
I'm fine with that.
It's, it's three or one, so four.
Oh, okay.
Anybody not like that?
It allows duplexes. I think that's enough, don't you?
Yeah, some people are saying they only want duplexes, so. Right now, we only have one in town, as far as I can tell, in, uh, under three hundred fifty thousand dollar category. Oh, we only have one duplex in the town assessed under three hundred fifty thousand, which is our workforce housing. And now we're gonna have a hundred fifty-eight of them.
I think you're excessive workforce housing.
I second that.
And here's the sub-time.
Workforce housing, we're all set.
Mister, Mister Chair.
We're a million dollars.
Mister Chair, how about we, how about we?
Point of origin. I want five hundred to seven hundred thousand.
So we're, we're just saying we want duplexes only in general residential.
No, we're single or, single or duplexes.
Anything under four.
Under three, under three.
No, I'm hearing under.
Duplexes.
You made a mistake. It's under three. Duplexes are single family only.
Duplexes are allowed.
In general residential.
Other families, it's three or more.
Okay.
So the answer, does anybody have a problem with one? Speak now, whoever with a piece.
Nope, go on.
Unanimous.
Turn it to move it forward and discuss.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought that's what we're doing. Okay, discuss.
No, no.
No.
Move it forward to the next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
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 Let's move forward and discuss.
Alrighty, good.
Where did two come from? I don't remember this one.
Uh, are they claiming that I sponsored that one?
What's the purpose of amendment two, John?
No.
Oh, yeah. We have a lot of innovative land use controls, which means we don't engage with the.
Correct.
Um, these are appealable to a higher place.
Where am I gonna get my Detroit style?
We just have to cite the.
Like South Boston style triplex now.
Okay.
I can't hear what's going on. John, can you just say that again, please?
Say one meeting, please.
You want me to, why, this, this is just to add a header above all of our innovative land use controls uh, to, to, to cite the state RSA that gives them authority. Other towns have been doing this. It's nothing big, not a big deal.
So.
You wanna know what our innovative land use control?
No, I'm just trying to understand what, why you were proposing this.
Just citing the RSA around those articles.
It seems that some lit case, cases that have been, Laura would probably know more about this, if required, that at least it'd be cited. That's all.
So it was just like an introduction to the next.
It's the introduction, that's all. Are, there's no ulterior motive here, folks.
But when you talk about, like, when we talk about innovative land use controls.
RSA six seventy-four.
Yeah, twenty-one.
Yeah, and they list A through K and then, um.
But they have inclusionary zones, phase development, um.
Well, I'm talking about our regs, which are, wait a minute.
I hear you, but if we're gonna reference six seventy-four twenty-one, you are specifically saying then that these apply.
No, I think he's saying, before our planned unit development chapter in zoning, he would cite that because that's an innovative land use. Before constitution subdivision, he'd cite that because it's an innovative land use. Before a phase development description, he would cite this article.
Except, except redwelling units, for example.
My concern is, is that somebody's gonna look at it and say, well, you're specifically citing a reference to here, which allows me the flexibility to look at this and say, oh, I can start looking at adding inclusionary zoning and things like that.
Move it forward to discussion. How's that? Highway commercial overlay is another one. Wetlands protection is one. Shore lane protection is one. Ground rider protection is one. Flood.
It's, are we being hurt by not having it in?
Could be. Well, that's gonna be part of the discussion when we.
The next one.
The next phase is one.
Off a private road surrounded by land owned by one end of town.
And there's, of course, too.
That is, uh, one of mine. And because of.
Give me an example.
Mister Jeffrey's, um, petition warrant article that said, change the definition of streets. Our zoning, um, setbacks aren't from streets. And so now if you own the underlying land and a right-of-way passes through it, and the perfect example is Ron's neighbor, who owns the land and wanted to put a garage on the edge of the right-of-way because of Mister Jeffrey's article, now there's no setback from a right-of-way because it's not a street because he changed that definition. So to put, uh, new language, something that, you know, says that, uh, to describe, uh, a travel way was one suggestion. To use the word setback from travel way, y'all encompassing, so there should still be setbacks. So if someone comes in and wants to build a garage, they can't put, block it down next to a fifteen-foot right-of-way and say, yes, my land too bad. Have to have some setback from that right.
But I'm also post-chop this because the right-of-way goes across my property to the next, to the next guy's property. So I don't know if I like this.
So, uh.
So we have to do a setback.
One more discussion on that one.
More discussion.
Personally impacts me, do you, Jamie, you know?
But it, it's a good one because we have an application that came in and I can't really imply setbacks because the definition of street no longer.
But it's, but it's different lots.
Have you checked the lawyer with that?
It was a vague and, um, ambiguous answer. Here's a ambiguous setback to everything.
Yeah, but that lot, the, the one he came in on, there were different lots.
I don't know, Alton.
Agreed.
Yeah, so.
So I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So you have a, a right-of-way over someone's property to a lot.
So.
To a, to a existing lot of record, which I guess otherwise technically now would be considered a landlot. Way into lot, a lot.
I don't agree with that interpretation, but if I could use this example, Flower Drive is a right-of-way for everybody, but it's owned by Linda Brashett. She owns the underlying land. So where she abuts that right-of-way, if she came in to pull a garage permit and said, I'm gonna put it right on the edge of that twelve-foot right-of-way and it's called Flower Drive, I don't know as though I have the authority to say, no, you need a forty-foot setback from the road.
Right.
Because now it's not a street. It used to be defined as a street, but now with the new language, it's not. So it's just, it's really a tweak in our ordinance to change the word street to a travel way so we can still apply setbacks.
Makes no sense. Why is it not a road?
Because of Mister Jeffrey's.
A, a petition warrant article took the, uh, I think it's the language, uh, that a right-of-way cannot be called a street. And, and you go into our regulations, it says the setbacks are from the street or lane or something like that. So now that it doesn't say street.
I, that's, I don't think was the intent of it.
That's why Laura said.
But the intent doesn't matter until it goes to court. I have to interpret it from my sense. And if it says the right-of-ways are from a street, now streets aren't defined as right-of-ways, I can't apply a setback to a right-of-way because it's not a street and we apply setbacks.
But it, yeah, I think it is a street though, because it's on a plot.
Yeah, it's on a plot.
Remember, it's on the town proved road. Remember the whole, we all get in. No, no, I'm not going there. I'm not going there. I'm not go, I'm going your way, which is.
They're not town.
If it's on a, a town thing.
It's a right-of-way over another's property. That's what we're talking about. He changed the definition. A street cannot be a right-of-way over another's property. So the existing streets that are right-of-way over another property now no longer have setbacks applied to them because he changed that definition.
Oh, get it done, please.
Well, it affects me too. But.
You don't have sixteen acres.
I thought that was creating a new road only. To me, the other two I was against because I think that was the interpretation. This interpretation, I'm saying you can't create a new one. That's what I thought.
No, he just changed the definition.
Yeah, but I thought that, that he put in three.
I think he was.
Two got failed because of, I think, exactly that problem, Jamie. This one, I think, passed because it, I took it to mean you can't create a new one. The ones that are created, I thought this.
A right of a, right of way, something that's strictly right-of-way is not a street for access to the lot.
But, you know, the section that Jamie and I always argue about, one of the things it says, it's a street if, it's a street, it is a street if it's on a town map somewhere. That's one of the things in.
Or approved by the planning board.
Yeah, but this would be the one that says it's on a town road, it's on a town map or something somewhere. There's one of those things is that, you know, it says that. And I think that's where it gets around it, Jamie, to me. You don't agree?
No.
No, it's not good.
Because this was the amended article. Article eighteen definitions, definition street. Are you in favor of amendment to twelve, Barrington's own ordinance by petition as follows, that has the bold text below section eighteen definitions of street. A street shall not include a right-of-way over another owner's property. So that right-of-way over another's property that we previously called streets is now not. It's just a right-of-way over another person's property. And if you go to the setback.
The right-of-way over another person's property. So he's saying if you have a property that's not on the street and it has a right-of-way and that's the only way there, you can't build it because it's not a street.
That's what he thinks, but that's not accurate. And that's how it was changed. What he changed was the definition. Just the definition, the word street.
It's not a right-of-way over somebody's property. And the lawyer said that was appropriate.
No, she said, we'll see what happens. At some point, you have a problem.
I gotta go back and find that email. Can we, can we ask the lawyer and just fricking say what we should do? It shouldn't be this hard. It's like the fundamental basis of all zoning. And we still aren't going over it.
I can get you the email. She emailed back.
Okay, I would love to see, send that to me.
The planning board's, you know, role to, to do this stuff and not, you know, the lawyer to do it all, but she said, wait till there's an issue. The issue arose that somebody wanted a building permit and do I apply setbacks on it? Now, I can honestly go either way, uh, and then see if they, you know, secretly, you know, try to overturn my judgment, go to the ZBA. Or I thought it would be better just to change the zoning to apply setbacks to right-of-ways, you know, because it untweaks the tweak.
To give you a temperature, I think we should move it forward for further discussion and.
Yeah, I'd like to have more informed, I don't know.
I will try to articulate it better and I.
Which, which definition, where, you were in zoning, looking at the definitions?
Yeah, that one with definitions.
We'll call that one Jamie's law.
I'm gonna pull out this. What, what is, where's on the RSA, Jamie?
Uh. Six seventy-four forty-one.
Six seventy.
I have a question. We do not, we do not have a definition of a road. Should we define a road? And then we have a definition of a street, but not a road. And a road, we can put in a specific definition for it and apply zoning to that. And then a right-of-way over a non-public way or a, or an easement over a travel way can be defined as like a road over a travel way. And then you can see the definition of a road and then have clarity with that.
In two thousand eighteen, there was an attempt to bend Barrington to define our street, but it lost by seventy-seven percent of the vote. Because, remember there was a big fight about that, whether a way was gonna be a street or a right-of-way was gonna be a street. Everybody was fighting in town.
The fear of loss of property rights, it is, and you start defining it as supplements.
I mean, I think redoing our private road thing would make a lot of sense. Well, be, because if you define a road, then you can also, that will help bring clarity to a private road as well because it, it is defined as a road.
It's supposed to a driveway.
Right.
A street giving access.
Don't even go add building permits. We'll go down that one next week. I'll definitely have a whole meeting for that.
Okay, before we go, Jamie, a street shown on an official map. I think that's where you get around it.
Man, I wish. I could pull that map off the wall and be like, every road in town's all good. I don't want to describe a road stuff, but.
See, if you call it a road, now you got a definition of a road, so that makes it easier.
Again, somebody, somewhere in this state must have nailed down the definitions. And we should just be able to lift them and use.
Well, we did, but then we went and voted to change that definition.
But the state doesn't have a definition of.
State doesn't have it.
Yeah.
Just like they don't have.
That's why we tried to do it in two thousand eighteen.
Another great argument. The state doesn't have buffers to wetlands. We do, you know? That's always been the argument for that pro and con buffer thing. Why do you need a buffer from the buffer from the buck? You know what I mean?
Live free or die.
That's it. Big books of words.
Live free and die.
All right, so I'm in favor of amendment three, uh, Barrington's own ordinance has recommended by the planning board to add to add new article blank defining the conditions under which the zoning administrator makes change of use determinations and under what conditions he may authorize reuse of a site without a site name revealed.
I am in favor of that. We'll bring it.
Yeah, I think the last time.
You need generally neutral language.
It would be, the department heads would all have a say or, or an opinion.
Yeah.
And then it would go to the planning board just to say, yeah, that makes sense.
More of a consent.
Yeah, but, but at least we'd see it. Yeah, but, but at least we'd see it.
I mean, I don't, I don't agree with that, John, I think there's, I think the department should be given some leeway. We don't wanna let every little thing roll in.
Right.
There should be, you know, some bounds around that, but, you know, if you guys say, this is nothing, I don't wanna see it.
And again, again, now you've been tying people up for another month waiting for our decision.
You have to, that's what we have to discuss at the next meeting, then.
Yeah.
What are the bounds?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that is worthy of discussion, I think.
Worthy of discussion.
I think zero flexibility on their part doesn't make sense.
Okay. So what does it next? Okay.
So the next one was just trying to, uh, bring your ADU portion of the zoning ordinance to compliance with the changes that, uh, take in place. I don't know if I got all of them, but I just wanted to get it on paper to get started with it. Um, you have a, one place where you can't really specify the location of the ADU entrance anymore, um, and then you also.
They don't have the door requirements.
Not, not the interior.
The new language says you can't impose design restrictions on the ADU that you don't impose on single-family houses.
Right. Now, the nine fifty, is that state law, or you can go up to nine fifty, we can adopt it?
You cannot, uh, nine fifty is, is, you can't do, is their, their guardrails, but you can do more, you can't do less, so.
Oh, you have to allow at least nine fifty.
Yeah, so I think we're in compliance everywhere, other than the design piece that we have in there that says it can't look like a duplex, the door's gotta be on the side. I think that's the only part of the regulation that's no longer compliant.
Well, you know, they also say about, uh, you can't force them to be on one electrical meter or on the utility meters. So that's why that part's.
Can we also change it from prin, principal swelling unit?
Sure. Now you're typing last minute fast.
You know, sweat lodge, call it, call it a dwelling instead of a swelling.
Okay, we can do that. Now, the next one, John, is that yours?
Um.
The map with fifty, fifty percent of the town?
Oh.
Yeah, that, that law didn't pass, so I think we should put that aside until the law passes.
Right.
Okay, now, the other.
That's Murphy's law.
Um, and I hate saying this, but didn't the state change the parking spaces, too?
Yes.
And I hate that change, because.
To one lot?
Just one.
One lot space.
One space.
Yeah. We're trying to hate, but it's the state law now, right?
Right.
So we should probably make that change, too. And I'm the one who pushed up the two, so I hate to go back.
So are we, I'm sorry, just for my own, I, I know we talked about this, but my brain is really getting slow at this hour. So we have paragraph four specifying the location of the ADU entrance, um, paragraph five requiring an interior door between principal swelling unit and ADU, and then paragraph ten requiring electrical, water, and sewer utilities on the same meter. Didn't we just say none of that was applicable anymore?
Right.
So are we looking at adding it back in? Or are this, are we just looking at removing it?
Yeah. We're gonna make a fit current RSA.
Okay. Units to remove pa, okay, I, just like I said, my brain's getting slow at this.
Does that actually have to be voted on? Can we not, do we, can we not put it on? We have so many things on the ballot. This is required by state law. It doesn't matter what people vote for.
Yeah, good question, I guess, Laura, I don't know the answer. Something to be coming, she said, yeah, come into compliance.
Then, then that's how we should notice it, is this is to come into compliance with RSA, with state RSA, blah, 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 blah.
So if they vote it down, it still goes in?
Right. And votes, you get kind of jumbled, either all of us comply with state, with state laws.
Right. I think we should lump it that way and just.
It would make it a bit easier.
It, it makes it very clear for the voters.
Yeah.
Do you still have one to amend the front setback from the travel way?
Uh, we, we kind of, we batted that one around, we'll, we'll come back to that and talk about it.
Okay.
I did have some others, but I'll, we'll articulate it and do it later, because I just The other one I'd like to do, so, is, uh, adding to the nine point six, an exception if you have a shoreline. The rationale is that if the state has looked at the area for shoreline impact, and they're giving you an impact to go into a shoreline area, you've got a wetland off to the side, and we're gonna regulate you on the buffer, but the state has allowed you to go dig in the lake.
Well, it's not the lake, it's within two and fifty feet of the lake.
You know it.
So you're saying that they've already approved the, the, you know, the.
Are you thinking?
Thousand square feet of disruption.
Are you thinking about this from, like, the applicant that came in, that ended up getting approved, where he was putting, like, the pool or whatever on the side of his?
Can't remember which one.
Not the Joe Wilson one.
Yeah.
His house, not the, not the duplex.
It was more recent that I looked at something and I said, geez, you know, they, they just went through all this, got a shoreline permit, now I guess some of the planning board for nine point six. You know, does it make sense that D E S has looked at it and given a pass on some of the impact, that maybe if you've got a shore, approved shoreline, that you can get a pass to go into the buffer if you need to? Oh, you know what it was? There's, um.
That's what we asked.
Sorry. Wait a minute, this is a, Washington Street, at the corner of Washington, one twenty-six, uh, right on the Isinglass River, they wanted to build a garage.
Yeah.
And so they did all the shoreline, shoreline perimeter, you know, extensive, and, um, and then one little corner in the front, which I don't know how they were able to put something in there, was a, you know, wetland buffer. Uh, so I don't know if they, I couldn't find any record of previous approvals, but, you know, I said, you can't go into that, and they made it put up silt fence around the buffer, because they had, the survey, but they delineated it, so you just can't, you can't go in there and dig, you have five feet to work, but, or go to the planning board for a nine point six, so. They put up, you know, the survey went up there, and I witnessed, and we went up there, and I said, I just gotta make sure before, you know, so they put up the silt fence in their, their area to work, but, you know, where they went to the state for all that impact stuff to the Isinglass River, I thought, might be a good one to bring up.
Actually, I think that makes sense. I mean, if the state's approved impacts of the wetlands, and saying we can't impact the buffer, I don't think that makes any sense.
I, I agree.
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good one, I think that's a good one, Jamie.
Well, hold on a minute.
We can discuss it more, it's, you know.
Yeah, I'm just.
We're gonna discuss.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, like, okay, they've impacted this much, now we're just gonna say, yeah, go for it, blow out the rest of it, like, that.
I think they should do limitations.
Yeah.
Guardrails.
Right, because what we're proposing here is, just blows the guardrails off of that, like, they can carry on.
Let the craft language that, you know, creates guardrails and puts it in a area, you know, within ten thousand feet or, you know, within X or Y.
Or certainly contiguous to the area, contiguous to the wetlands that are being impacted.
Right, because now you just keep going, like, carry on.
It's gotta be contiguous to the, contiguous to the wetlands.
The rationale is that they won't give you a shoreline impact with our buffer, because it's not, you know, if it's also on that two fifty, you know, there's just, it's only, it's only come up once, as I've been doing it, and then it's very long, but it's the